Good evening and welcome. As my colleagues are making their way up to the dais. I've got a brief little fill here. For those of you who don't know me, I'm John Bartle. Director of the Freeholders Board this year. And it's a privilege to spend this evening celebrating some members of our Hispanic community as Hispanic Heritage Month. We're going to do that as part of our conference agenda, which is what leads off the evening. So why don't we get that started? The role of...
Freeholders: Hopper, Bass, Dumpy, James, LaFour. Deputy Director: Lizarim. Director: Bartlett.
Here. Anthony, Administrator.
Director, tonight, we're celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. Everyone, I believe, has a program. I'm actually just going to turn it over to you. Is that correct?
Same one?
I think you are now.
Very good. Well, I will start the program from up here, although I have a privilege to go down to the podium in just a moment because that one of the awards. You know, we are a county that is, not just by the numbers, more than one-third Hispanic, but a county that, as you can see from the flags parade along here, really is rich with all kinds of Latin culture, from, you know, Mexican and Dominican to Peruvian and Colombian and Ecuadorian and so many other communities. And it's a special privilege every year to pause for a minute and recognize leaders in those communities who are part of what enriched the state of county and part of what make it a place that is such a tremendous destination and is a place where people from all over Latin America have decided to come and set down roots and build their lives as Americans. And I can say, you know, very personally, not having grown up in this area is one of the things that I enjoy most about being part of the state county now as an adult. And with that in mind, throughout this year, as our various months have come along, from Black History Month to Women's History Month to Asian Pacific American Heritage Month earlier this year, we've been recognizing people from all of our diverse communities that do work in the healthcare space, whether as physicians, as nurses, as public health professionals, as people in the business of healthcare. I know that that sort of makes healthcare a big topic for throughout this evening's program, but it is one that we're spending this year focusing on because for so many of us, it is such an important part of our lives. I say that appropriately as a doctor's kid, but also as someone for whom the contributions of that professional community mean so much to this county. So with that, I want to dive into the presentation of our population, the recognition of our three honorees. And Terry, if you could be honored of getting us started?
My pleasure.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Enrique. So whereas our nation is celebrating the Spanish Heritage Month, at this time to honor and recognize Enrique Sagama. And whereas Enrique Sagama immigrated to the United States from Lima, Peru, Patterson was parents and sister at the age of sixteen began to set American education in the ESL program at Eastside High School, graduating in 1991. And there, there, as it chose to continue his education in the state, where he earned a bachelor's degree in public health. Whereas Enrique Sagama accepted employment with the Preakness Healthcare Center, where he served as a recreation therapist through Pathway Special Behavior Unit. He was promoted to serve as recreation supervisor, which allowed him to focus on residents that are often misunderstood, those living with mental illnesses or advanced dementia. That's the reason I'm reading this? Yes. Or advanced dementia. And he also volunteered his time in service as an A M P with the state county sheriff's department. Whereas Enrique Sagama, who presently serves at the Preakness Healthcare Center Mental Health Administration, a position he has held since 2012, has been a dedicated employee for the state county and Preakness Healthcare Center since 2003. And so, through his hands and work experience and his desire to further succeed in the healthcare field, he is pursuing the message to create an applied behavioral analysis at Caldwell University. Terry oversees the Pathway Behavioral Health Special Care Nursing Facility Unit and the Plaza West Long-Term Care Mental Health Unit. He is a passionate about working with residents, staff, physicians, psychiatrists, and psychologists as creatively to pursue, to creatively pursue, non-traumatic interventions when possible for residents with dementia. And whereas Enrique Sagama, while proud of his Peruvian heritage, takes pride in the county that gave him so many opportunities, together with his parents Emerson and Melissa and sister Roxanna, they became American citizens. And whereas Enrique Sagama is married to Leslie and they have a son, Antonio, who is now thirteen, with whom he shared his love of soccer by serving for the past six years as head coach of his Hawthorne Recreation Soccer Team. And although entry, and although entry no longer allows him to play soccer, he admits to playing tennis twenty-four-seven in the U S T A membership. Whereas Sagama looks forward to traveling with San Antonio to its neighborhood Peru, where they can visit and experience a place he once thought home. Now therefore, it proclaims that the board chose the freeholders of the county of Passaic. Hereby applauds and acknowledges numerous achievements, and Enrique Sagama has made for service as a recreation unit. Congratulations, you all. And from the Senate and General of San...
Thank you, everybody. I'd like to say thank you to the board, that I know you guys support Preakness so much. Thank you for my parents to being brave enough to come to a country that they didn't know anything about, and through efforts we went and we had a better life. I've been working for Preakness for sixteen years. Thank you to my friend Juan, that is here, he's my son's dad father, and actually, it was a funny story because we worked before, and he just, we lost contact for two years and he found me and he said, "Well, listen, you know, they're opening a behavior unit. How about work with us?" I said, "Well, you know, I always talk about Preakness and how good it is and I know about county physicians and anything like that." And he said, "Well, come in, come for an interview." I learned Mrs. Carrado interviewed me, and that day was a little easy to get hired. It took a few weeks I was hired, and since I got there, I loved Preakness. I've been before Preakness, I think I have like twenty jobs. I was moving around. There was no room to move, there was no inspirations. So then I found Preakness and I fell in love with it. I know if it wasn't for the support of our administration, I know, I know Mrs. Carrado, we don't agree with everything, but we have a goal to improve the life of our residents. And that's pretty much what we're all about. It's been sixteen years and with our, I think we have a lot of workers, they have this passion because we're not, we're not about paycheck, we're about the passion that we have for our residents. And there's a lot to improve and we're going to continue working. And thank you for this recognition.
Thank you very much, Enrique. Thank you, Terry, for doing that. Before we move on, I just want to recognize that Preakness Healthcare Team that Enrique mentioned is remarkable. Would everyone who's here with us, who works for us at our Preakness Healthcare Center in Wayne, please stand up and give a round of applause. There is, there's a consistent theme when I hear from constituents about Preakness, and it is about how remarkable the care is there. And I know that all of you are part of making that happen, so thank you for that. Before I dive into the next presentation, I want to acknowledge we have with us here this evening Chairman John Currie, the state county Democratic Committee and our Board of Directors. The pace setter for a lot of the growing diversity that you see in county government. And apropos that, our county clerk Danielle Ireland Imhoff is here with us as well. They're working late because it's our first election day of the fall. If you live in Hawthorne, you've got until eight o'clock this evening to vote on the referendum for your school bond issue, to invest in improving the school system and the school buildings there in Hawthorne. So I got started in this whole adventure of freeholding, as they call it, alongside Hector Laura, who is now the mayor of the great city of Passaic. And one of the first people that my family and I got to know was his wife, Niko Dees. And I want to invite Niko Dees up here and the whole family, if you want to bring them, or if you want to make them sit there and watch, that's also fine. It takes a particular heart and a particular personal commitment to the well-being of people around you to do the work of nursing and public health. And that's why Nikki, it's so incredibly suitable that we're recognizing you as part of Hispanic Heritage Month this year. And I want to read this into the record. It is very narrowly spaced and very dense because of all that you have done. I'll skip the part about National Hispanic Heritage Month and dive right into, whereas Niko Dees Laura immigrated to the United States with her family from the Dominican Republic when she was four years old, settling in the city of Passaic, and later moving to the city of Patterson, where she graduated from John F. Kennedy High School and St. Academy. And whereas Nikki Laura pursued a career in nursing, obtaining her RN from Birmingham Community College and her VSN from Liberty University, her passions include her strong faith and service in church, medical science, arts, music, and community service. She was a member of the Union Baptist Church Choir in Passaic with pre-baptist church youth group, and participated in pageants and teen modeling programs throughout the United States. And whereas Nikki Laura is an active member of her local church, where she has served since her youth as the first Spanish pre-methanist church of Passaic, she has volunteered her time organizing toy drives and holiday dinners for needy families, and participated in dance workshops and advocacy ministry. And whereas Nikki Laura met her husband, the Honorable Hector Carlos Laura, in her local church while both were serving as Sunday school teachers. Her husband is the mayor of the city of Passaic, and she serves as First Lady of the city of Passaic. And they have four children, three of whom are here with us tonight. And whereas Nikki Laura is presently the public health nurse in Clifton, her work with public health started in college in a foster care agency promoting wellness and educating families on healthy lifestyle choices. And after receiving her RN, she took a position in Passaic as a public health nurse promoting wellness in the city, where she educated residents on lead poisoning, the importance of vaccines, and participated in wellness campaigns. Worked as a nurse at Preakness Healthcare Center in Wayne, where she proudly served alongside her colleagues, providing medical treatment and care to some of the most vulnerable and ailing residents. And whereas Nikki Laura co-started the Love Thy Neighbor Initiative of Passaic County, a homeless outreach program through the county, collecting food, clothing, and toiletries for the less fortunate. She is the executive director of the Teen Passaic Civic Organization, which unites the diverse communities of Passaic in an effort to provide assistance, programs, and services to the residents of the city of Passaic through different initiatives and activities. She also worked closely with her husband in creating and developing Passaic's first ever Dignity House, a resource center and emergency shelter for homeless and needy families and residents in our area. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the board chosen freeholders of the county of Passaic hereby proudly applauds and acknowledges the numerous achievements that Niko Dees Laura has made and for her service to the community. Make me thank you.
Freeholders, this is truly an honor. I want to thank my husband and my family. Hector is always so supportive. He wants me to advance in my career and has been just amazing when it comes to that. Just thank my children for being so patient with me while I'm, you know, in school or at work. Thank you, boys. I'm just very happy and very honored to be here. I was just at a women's health conference yesterday that was led by our amazing First Lady Tammy Murphy. She has really taken the helm of public health and women's health and bringing awareness to the state of New Jersey. And I'm just, I'm so proud to be in that area and to work alongside other public health nurses and our First Lady to continue to bring awareness to women's health issues in our entire state. And I'm just thankful, thank you so much for your...
It is my distinct pleasure to serve as part of the National Hispanic Heritage Month by recognizing two outstanding individuals. These Dr. Gloria Mejia and Dr. Edgar Mejia de Quir. They are, please come forward and see. Let me just start out, for those of you who don't know, both doctors happen to be brothers and sisters, so that's a little extra special there. Whereas our nation is celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month from September fifteenth, twenty nineteen, to October fifteenth, twenty nineteen. In recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional Hispanics over the years, the board of chosen freeholders of the county of Passaic views it fitting and appropriate this time to honor and recognize Dr. Gloria Mejia and Dr. Edgar Mejia. Dr. Gloria Mejia and Dr. Edgar Mejia are a brother and sister team who immigrated to the United States after receiving their medical degree from the Universidad de Cartagena. They both practiced pediatrics at Bronx Lebanon Hospital in New York City, while opening their practice in Patterson. Both doctors are associated with St. Joseph University Medical Center and Atkinson University Medical Center. Their practice in Patterson, known as Kitty Clinic, opened in nineteen ninety-four and is located at seven six zero Main Street, where they provide the highest quality of healthcare and outstanding medical treatment in a patient-friendly office. Dr. Gloria and Dr. Edgar are lifelong learners. Not only have they received advanced medical training in pediatrics, they continually pursue ongoing education to stay abreast of the latest child healthcare. Kitty Clinic is a team of board-certified pediatricians who provide quality healthcare to children through compassionate and comprehensive medical care, from infancy to adolescence. And their clinic continually is adding new patient-focused services, combined with medical knowledge and expertise in advanced technology. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the board chosen freeholders of the county of Passaic, we hereby proudly applaud and acknowledge the numerous achievements that Dr. Gloria Mejia and Dr. Edgar Mejia have made for their service to the community. Thank you very much.
We've talked, we don't speak too much. We are not prepared for this part. We are glad to thank the state county board of chosen freeholders for this great extension. As my friend LaFour said, that Gloria Mejia is sister, actually I convinced Gloria we thought to come here to the United States because I didn't want to come by myself. Without her, what would it be like we are at this moment? We have, my sister here, she's the administrator of the office. And that little lady there is a doctor too, is my dear daughter Sandy. She graduated in Colombia also, and she's doing the same that we did so many years ago. And I have a forty-seven-year-old son, he's Pakistani, to administer the office. He's going to get a diploma of medical office administrator. He's so proud of that. And as Mr. LaFour said, we've worked with Hackensett Medical Center and St. Joseph Medical Center also. At the beginning, I don't take more than forty-five minutes, I promise. Beginning, I came here to be a practitioner, because that was my dream, but I got my first job in Patterson Medical Hospital. When I saw the necessity of this community, that they needed a doctor, especially a pediatrician who could speak Spanish, I said to myself, forget about practitioners, we're going to be a pediatrician here in Patterson. And we are so proud to be here, we're so proud to serve this community until God will. Thank you very much.
I want to say thank you to everybody, and because we're in the alitmon, I want to say muchas gracias.
So I want to invite all of our honorees and their families up front. Chairman and Danielle join us as well for some photos. I'll let you all know that part of the wonderful tradition of these Heritage Months for us is the buffet, which awaits you downstairs on the first floor of the atrium. There's a new restaurant in Wayne called Guacamole that just opened on Hanbury Turnpike across from where Mangus Town Tavern is, right there in the Mall of the School of Rock and some of the other places. They were high enough to cater this evening's buffet downstairs, so do enjoy some Mexican food at the end of the program. And after this, we're going to move on to the rest of our conference agenda. So thank you for being part of the Hispanic Heritage Month. If you're following along, you'd think the next thing we're going to do is a public hearing on the land transfer of the border of Hawthorne, but the law requires us to wait until after six p.m. to do that. So we are going to skip ahead to the review of our consent agenda, K one through K thirty-five. And specifically, I want to give both our Administrator and Freeholder James the opportunity to talk about one of the items on our agenda which relates to the third-party administrator of our healthcare system. But first, Council, I need you to start it.
Mr. Director, through you, my office is recommending that we amend K twelve, which is the matter we just spoke about, the resolution authorizing contract for new third-party administrator. The only amendment to the resolution is of the letter that was for you, both partial summary of the proposal from the third-party administrator Meridian, and a recommendation to the insurance commission from our insurance progress area. They were both submitted to Mr. De Nova on behalf of the Passaic County Insurance Commission.
All the people who have copies of those and others being amended to K twelve?
Yes.
Very good. So with that, let me give you, Anthony, the opportunity to talk about K twelve and what it's going to mean for our employees in our county.
Happy to do it. Thank you, Director. So the Freeholder Insurance Commission, which is made up myself, our Director of Finance, Mr. Cahill, Freeholder James, along with County Counsel's Office, Mr. Glovan and Ms. Park, and my Deputy Administrator Matt Jordan. We interviewed four separate third-party administrators. Our current third-party administrator, being Horizon Blue Cross, was one of them. After multiple interviews, we interviewed him once, and we got back two of the four for a second interview, actually three of the four for a second interview. It was determined that we would make a switch to go to Muritain, which is our third-party administrator. So for the employees who are here this evening concerned about what will change, nothing will change. So your insurance that you have today will be the same as you have on January first of two thousand and twenty. As many of you know, we are self-insured, which means we create the plan document, which means nothing is going to change except the person who's administering the claims. Over the years, to say lightly, I think I lost a little confidence in Horizon. I think that was evident in the presentation that they made to our committee. Muritain, who is part of, is owned by Aetna and the Aetna Network, I believe, will have a better eye on claims management, which again, I think helps all of us, helps control costs, and since we all are now paying for our healthcare, it's important that we try to contain costs wherever we can. But again, simply said, nothing will change. I know people want to not believe me, and you're entitled not to believe me if that's what you choose. For those who know me well enough, I wouldn't sit up here and tell you something that I didn't know to be the fact. But nothing will change. So whatever plan that you have today will be your plan come January first. The only thing is, you're going to have, instead of Horizon Blue Cross card, you're going to have an Aetna card that says Muritain and the Aetna Network. So I'd be happy to answer any questions specifically.
I want to just add something to that because it's the plan document that I understand everybody wants. So just wanted to give a note to our county council. They're going to email me every plan document for every plan that we have. That's what determines your insurance. And when we say nothing changes, the plan documents are. It didn't belong to Blue Cross. It didn't belong to that RML IDA years ago. You know, I'm a union guy, I'm a very one here. I would not let something hurt the employees. First of all, I'm a retiree, so I'm under the same plan you guys are. You want the plan documents, so you can look at it, so you know what you have. Actually, the plan document is going to get is the one that Blue Cross uses and the one that Muritain is going to have. Now you'll have, nothing's changed on that plan. You'll have it, your unions will have it, you can give it to your council, you can hire consultants, whatever you want to do with it. You will have the plan that guarantees that discusses and puts in writing every benefit that you have, what your copay is, all of that stuff is in the plan documents, what's covered, what's not covered, in the plan document. You've been living with it for as long as you've had Blue Cross. You're going to live with it with the new company that administers it, but you'll have a copy of it so you can't say that you didn't have it. One of the things that frustrated me years ago when we went to IDA, is you couldn't, it's equal to or better than, but you couldn't get any plan documents from the people that were in charge back then, right? Because I ran the union across the street. Same problem that if you were working for the Sheriff's Department, those years, same problem you had, right? It's open, it's transparent, you'll have it, give it to whoever you want to look at, and if there is a problem with anybody, you'll always have an appeal to the Insurance Committee of the United States. So whatever you have currently, I'll guarantee you, if it comes before us, you'll have it going forward. Plan documents not changing. So you'll have it.
twenty years, twenty-two years respectfully, sir, and I'm talking about for the past five years. And I'm gonna put it out there on a personal matter, it's something that we've been dealing with, that was brought to your board, and I've been dealing with the individual that's the consultant for the insurance company, and they couldn't even give me an answer. Until I did, and did my own research, there are certain things from our health insurance that when Blue Cross and Blue Shield converted, it didn't pick it up. It was a glitch. And I have documentations that people work at home with all this, because I've been going back and forth with Blue Cross and Blue Shield. I have reference numbers, I have dates, I have people that sent on the board, I have, my wife even came to a meeting with the health insurance when they were here, and it was clearly stated that if you go through negotiations in your contract wherever you're at, if the negotiation body pretty state that once you leave the traditional, that if the wording is saying that you're not allowed to go back, you will not, don't be able to go back to the traditional insurance. So now, what I'm saying respectfully, on the record, is this, that if we switch in January, and I got all these medical bills going on with Horizon Blue Cross and Blue Shield, you're telling me that everything's gonna be covered?
Your medical bills are with the county of Passaic, we're self-insured.
I understand that, but this is, this is what I'm saying, because I'm well-educated with the self-insured terminology, all right? I'm gonna give you another, another thing, we're self-insured, but if I pick up the phone right now and tell Blue Cross, Blue Shield, give me your best health insurance you have for a family of four, you know what my quote would be if I'm on the streets not working at this department that I took twenty-two years ago? Sixteen hundred dollars. Respectfully what I'm paying now through Chapter 78, which some said it last year sometime. So, with all due respect, with everybody up there that I come in contact, you're not telling me something I already don't know. Just like I know Aetna's part of C V S, I know it's part of each script, all right? So, there's nothing, I know and understand all the, all the stuff that's going on through the Assis County, Hudson County, and Passaic County that's tripling down when it comes to insurance. If you do your research back in 2016, Assis County switched over to Aetna.
Sir, I, I.
All I'm saying is respectfully what you're stating, when January comes, if I have an issue, I can go to the person that sits on the floor, which is yourself, correct on the thing, James?
Yeah.
Okay. First of all, I do wanna talk to you, not tonight, but I do wanna talk to you today, because I don't understand your issue. We've had Blue Cross for more than five years, so whatever you're running into on the floor, certainly not gonna do it in front of everybody. But you come to my office, and I'll work with you to see what the problem is.
Basically, what I'm stating was when you.
Sir, sir, sir.
I would.
Don't do it here. I will work with you to correct, if there's something to correct, whatever you have. I'll be more than happy to work with you, you can ask anybody. I will sit with anybody at any kind of benefit issue.
Sir, I, I allow you to speak, and I appreciate from this sheer number of people here how important this is to folks who have taken the time to come here and be in the room. Just to be clear, this remains a public meeting, there's gonna be a point in time where there will be a public portion where you can raise comments. My suggestion to anyone who's thinking of commenting today is, of course, we want to hear whatever you have to say. If you have a particular problem with your coverage or with a claim, this public meeting is probably not the best place to deal with it. But we do have an insurance commission which freeloader James serves on, we do have a staff here in the building, and I imagine you probably have staff through the sheriff's office as well, that would be the right place to go with a particular concern about a particular claim, a particular coverage. What we've heard today is that the plan is the plan, so, for example, Anthony, co-pays aren't gonna change.
No.
The, the.
Out-of-pocket.
Out-of-pocket's not gonna change. Scope of coverage is not gonna change. I want to give the other freelovers the opportunity to ask any questions of the administrator or freeloader James before we move on to the consent agenda.
I have a, I have a quick question. I, I know somebody personally on the inside that's a doctor, and I spoke to him like.
Just, just to be clear, sir, I'll hear from you, but to recap, this isn't even the freeloader meeting yet, and there will be what's called the public portion of the freeloader meeting. I would ask, other than this gentleman who chose to speak up, please confine your comments to the portion of the meeting when you're supposed to be making them. But sir, if you wanna raise your personal issue, you're, at liberty to do so. Okay, well, I imagine he'll still be here during the public portion? Yes, Michael?
Response, freeloader, I also wanted to respond to your question about why it's necessary to act tonight. During the open enrollment period, Meridian will have a representative here present in order to answer the questions of the members who either are thinking of changing plans, or think, or have questions about their network. So, that is one of the reasons that it's important to act tonight, and we shouldn't put it off, because otherwise, we won't have the benefit of that representative being present.
What's that timeframe?
That's, start next week, and I believe during the month of October is open enrollment. So, that, that's, that's the reason that, that the commission is recommending that you act tonight.
Barbara here? Barbara, this girl?
No.
Okay. I think she told me the first meeting for open enrollment is like the second meeting on October.
Thank you, Michael, thank you. Council, any need for take exception or anything else? So, with that, and again, our freeloader meeting has yet to begin, and we will have a public portion coming up later on. Let's move on. Ruth?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm aware, I know freeloader James, and, and know that I have to leave for an emergency meeting.
I'm gonna take, I'm gonna.
So, let's move on to the public hearing. Public hearing, um, this hearing was. This hearing will be held to solicit, solicit comments from the public on the intention of the board of choosers and freelovers in the county of Passaic to administer a public transfer approximately thirteen thousand six hundred and eighty-seven square feet or point three one four two acres of green acres encumbered parkland, and maintain an easement of three thousand two hundred and sixty-nine feet or point oh seven five acres, a portion of block eighty-one, block one of the Gotham Brook Park, Passaic County home parkland immediately adjacent to one downway Hawthorne, New Jersey, block eighty-one, block one in the Borough of Hawthorne, to the adjacent property, the Borough of Hawthorne. The purpose of this, uh, the purpose of this proposed administrative transfer is to provide the Borough of Hawthorne ownership of this parcel that is currently being used by the Boys and Girls Club of Hawthorne as a playground, with the understanding that the playground will be accessible to the general public. The green acres restrictions on the parkland will be transferred within the parkland and will run with the property in perpetuity. The Borough of Hawthorne, New Jersey will compensate the county of Passaic one dollar. The Passaic County Board of Chosen Freelovers is holding this public hearing tonight, Tuesday, September 24th at 6:00 p.m. This public hearing was published in the Herald-Museum Bourbon Record on July 28, 2019.
Freelovers, actor, Best, Duffy, James, LaFord, Deputy Director Lozare, Director Bartlett.
Here. So, to put that in simpler terms, when we were doing our Gotham Brook Park improvements, we discovered that the Boys and Girls Club playground in Hawthorne was actually on county land, and to clean up the land ownership element of that, we're selling that portion of what was Gotham Brook Park, county land, to the Borough of Hawthorne for the Boys and Girls Club playground, Borough Park. That's the plain language version of this. With that, can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
If I could, for the record, this has been approved by green acres. Borough Hawthorne is also agreeing, lease agreement with the Boys and Girls Club, and also reasonable access to the existing playground.
Can I have a motion open? Make that motion. Freelovers, actor, Best, Duffy, James, LaFord, Deputy Director Lozare, Director Bartlett. So, does anyone present designs to be heard on this land deal in Hawthorne?
Do you know that's.
I just, can I? I just want to ask a question. Yeah, all right. Um, what's that? Okay.
You gotta be quick, because I'll be there in a second. So, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes, and it'll be public.
Heidi L. Ammon, 112 Cedar Avenue, Hawthorne, New Jersey. I didn't see any, I know that you posted in many places in the park about this, so I'm not gonna ask. I didn't see any, um, footmarks showing exactly where that playground is, it's just that area, that whole main area.
Yeah, if we could send, if you'd like, we could send you copy of the survey, man.
I'll let you go. Also, I wanted to know, um, so if we open to the public at all times, or just outside of the.
Well, again, green acres requires reasonable access.
Okay.
So, obviously, Boys and Girls Club have programming, they would be able to deny people to access it at that point in time.
I think they might do that, because if the state's issues happen.
Anything that's subject to green acres restrictions, the language in that is reasonable public access. So, if you find that that's not happening, have that in common, we'll drop you there in Hawthorne.
I didn't know how far as I am to, 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 to. They do that. Um.
I need to, if you give Matthew to write your email address, we'll email you the.
All right, great, thank you.
All right? All right, thank you.
Do you know that's.
Freelovers, actor, Best, Duffy, LaFord, Deputy Director Lozare, Director Bartlett. We actually have to do all the motions here. Freelovers, actor, Best, Duffy, LaFord, Deputy Director Lozare, Director Bartlett. And that brings us to the regular meetings of the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freelovers for September 24th, 2019. We defer to the announcement and the oral vote.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement that open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including the annual notice adopted the reorganization meeting filed with the county clerk posting administration building mailed to two newspapers in accordance with provisions of the law. We'll call freelovers, actor, Best, Duffy, James, LaFord, Deputy Director Lozare, Director Bartlett.
Please rise for the indication.
Oh God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love, be gracious enough to bless thy servants, our freelovers in the county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord. Amen.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the people of it for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment's time to remember all the men and women who died while serving in the United States armed forces and as first responded across the country. And I have a motion to three minutes, it's September 10th. Freelovers, actor, Best, Duffy, LaFord, Deputy Director Lozare, Director Bartlett. And that brings us to the regular meetings of the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freelovers for September 24th, 2019. We defer to the announcement and the oral vote.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement that open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including the annual notice adopted the reorganization meeting filed with the county clerk posting administration building mailed to two newspapers in accordance with provisions of the law. We'll call freelovers, actor, Best, Duffy, James, LaFord, Deputy Director Lozare, Director Bartlett.
Please rise for the indication.
Oh God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love, be gracious enough to bless thy servants, our freelovers in the county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord. Amen.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the people of it for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment's time to remember all the men and women who died while serving in the United States armed forces and as first responded across the country. And I have a motion to three minutes, it's September 10th. Freelovers, actor, Best, Duffy, LaFord, Deputy Director Lozare, Director Bartlett. And a motion on the pro forma.
Move.
Freelovers, actor, Best, Duffy, LaFord, Deputy Director Lozare, Director Bartlett. I'm gonna move freeloader reports to act the public portion, because we've got a number of people who I know are here who wish to be heard. So, can I have a motion skipping down to J on our agenda? Can I have a motion to open the oral portion to leave?
Move. Second.
Freelovers, actor, Best, Duffy, LaFord, Deputy Director Lozare, Director Bartlett. So, this is the public portion of the meeting where you can get up and say anything you want within reason for three minutes. What you say will become part of the public record. We ask you to sign in and begin by introducing yourself, name and address.
There's six of us from West Milford, who would like to be heard, so we'll just hold on for about an hour. Beginning, my name is Renea Lesko, I'm the director of coordinator for the Passaic County Health Department for all the ten years until my retirement in April 2018. I'm a forty-two-year resident of West Milford, I am also a board member of Sustainable West Milford. West Milford Township mayors, councilmen, and residents have been asking the Passaic County for three years to stop spraying air roadsides and herbicides, specifically.
Ranger Pro, which contains glyphosate. But the county has not stopped. A few of us are here this evening to finally address the entire Passaic County governing board in person. Last week, I emailed the administrator and all the freelovers a position paper put out by Sustainable West Milford. Hopefully, you all read it, because limited time will not allow us to read the entire paper here tonight. Our position paper clearly shows why Ranger Pro should not be used in Passaic County or elsewhere. We are not scientists, but we believe in science and facts. I am more than disappointed in this governing body about this issue. Usually, you have been extremely supportive on issues of health and the environment, but when you tell us that it is less expensive to spray than to mow, you ignore the long-term health costs for the people and the environment exposed to this poison. Ecosystems are destroyed by these chemicals. This product is so overused in the world today that if all of us here were tested today, there would be ninety, a ninety-three percent chance that there would be glyphosate found in our urine. I passed out photos taken within the past couple of days of two county roads in West Milford, Echo Lake Road and Union Valley Road, and of Clinton Road and Warburg Turnpike, which are township roads. You can see the difference between roads maintained by the county and sprayed, and those not maintained by the county. County roadsides often look scorched while the other roads are still green and lush. I also have a couple of photos of wildflowers on the sides of roads. The ideal solution would be to grow wildflowers on the sides of the roads that create habitats for beneficial insects and add beauty as nature intended. Bottom line, we want Passaic County to stop spraying herbicides and to repair these damaged barren areas, and where possible, use wildflowers to do so. The New Jersey Department of Transportation needs to stop spraying too. Let's be the example of good stewardship that I know we can be. Future generations depend on us. By the way, it would be great if there was at least one freeloader meeting of county, either in Ringway or West Milford, at least once a year in the spring or fall. The county doesn't end in Wayne. Many of your constituents find it difficult to travel almost an hour to come here. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Robin Rose Bennett, and can you hear me if I stand up? Okay. My address is 41 Terracotta Road, I'm in. My address is forty-one Terracotta Road, I'm in Hewitt, New Jersey. Um, the last time I was here, I was here receiving a dig-in grant from you for my medicinal herb garden in our town, an old volunteer-run garden, um, for which I'm very grateful. And I don't actually know what is the delay, because in, in our town requesting for three years that we not have this poison sprayed on our roadside, I don't, I don't understand what is going on with this. So, I, I mean, when I drive down the roads now, I interact with nature every day as an environmental educator and as an herbalist, and what I see is very dangerous. I see glyphosate Roundup sprayed on the bottoms of steeply sloped hillsides, and I see trees coming down, and I see stumps coming down. I see danger. I see danger for landslide. But even beyond potential danger, there is our responsibility to stop when we have a known poison, when we have something that's been proven again and again to cause Mon Hutchins lymphoma to be a known neurotoxin. We have something that's going into our well water. I've heard residents say, "I have to move. I don't know what else to do." Not only that, but when I drive down and I see the earth looking like this, it breaks my heart. Like, every single time I drive by it, it breaks my heart, because there is no good reason for it. So when we went to the town council meeting on Wednesday, they said, "We are all in favor of an alternate plan. Please bring us the pollinator-friendly city plan." So I've been researching that. I see towns all over New York State, I see entire states like Connecticut adopting, "We're going to be pollinator protectors." We need to really deal with the reality that we are in trouble in our, in our land. We need to protect the bees, we need to protect the butterflies. This is our food. This is our food. And, you know, the animals, the wildlife, they don't have a choice, right? If there's poison there, and they're hopping through it, and they're flying through it, and they're walking through it, they're getting poisoned. So, uh, I could go on, but I won't. I know you, your time is short, I, I think I've made my point. But it has to stop. It simply has to stop, and we have excellent alternatives that we can suggest here that will be beautiful, that will encourage tourism, and that will be healthy. We all, unfortunately, every single person here, I'm sure, has been impacted by somebody they love with cancer. We need to be real, okay? So let's do something positive. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Norma Steele. I live at twenty-three Gifford Road in Hewitt. Um, I am a part of the same organization Renee just mentioned, Sustainable West Milford, and I have a history of being an environmentalist with a degree in environmental studies. I just want to speak for the water. Greenwood Lake is in desperate need of voices to proclaim its safety, and one of the things that is very unsafe to Greenwood Lake and all the lakes in our area is the runoff that we're getting from drugs, uh, herbicides like Roundup. We have enough trouble with our septic systems. We have a, a law on the books that says we must have our septic systems cleaned every three years. I know we do. That's one of the problems with runoff. Runoff is also a problem because of the terrain. We live on shale, basically. So there's a lot of extenuating circumstances that hurt our lakes. This is one that does not have to be, we do not have to use something that is toxic to the water, and that affects all of us. By the way, our lake was closed, uh, mid-July. What that has done to business has been abysmal. People have not rented for their summer vacations in our lake community. People are not going to the restaurants on the lake. It's been a real hardship, and, um, I'm hoping that you will really consider this and go along with not spraying. Thank you.
If I may, because I, I'm a little bit early, and I apologize, but I do want to just tell the people from West Milford that I do have our health department looking at a greener product, uh, and we do have our parks department and our roads department looking at, um, the possibility of wildflowers, uh, along certain county roads. It's not going to be the answer everywhere, certainly lends itself more to up county than down county, uh, but it is a possibility. So we are looking at a grea-, we're trying to find a greener product. Okay? Thank you.
Hello, I'd like to ask a question, Freeholders. My name is Frank Angel, I've been resident of West Milford for forty-seven years, uh, my best in my life, pretty much in the area. I just want to ask if anyone, um, has as familiar, you know, as any, has traveled the roads, the county roads, uh, for any reason of recreation, go on Greenwood Lake or anything like that? If anyone has any familiarity with the roads we're speaking about and, and how they appear now as opposed to how they appeared prior to three years ago? Is anyone here familiar? Oh, I didn't know that. So you're very familiar with the change? Yeah. Yeah, and when I, when I first recognized it, I was sort of like in a state of shock for seeing, driving all over the country, from Maine to Carolinas, Florida, out west, I've never seen anything but there's pavement and there's green immediately next to it, except for a few guardrail things, and there is the construction. It's pavement and green. And in the, in the fifties, the S O maps had county roads, bike thirteen, particularly Union Valley Road, as a designated scenic route, and it was the day, the days of Happy Morte, and you get in your car on a Sunday morning, you look at the map, "Hey, here's a beautiful designated scenic route, let's take a ride." And you would go up what is an incredibly beautiful way that leads towards Greenwood Lake, you know, through the mountains, like the valley through the mountains. And West Milford is a jewel of the county. In, in the early days of, of our, of the revolutionary times, Anne Lafford Hamilton from Patterson was involved, there was a study made, this is from North Watershed publication, to look for the cleanest water in the thirteen colonies. They came up with the area that is now in North Watershed and includes West Milford. We have the Highland Act kind of in the spirit of that to realize the, the importance, the life-giving force of water. It's like one of the basic element of life. And everybody up there, except even the town wells and the, and the water systems, it's all wells. Everything go, everything that's on the ground runs off into these wells eventually. It's a, it's a time-consuming process, but with hydrology, it does, what's on the surface runs into the streams, runs into the water, there's absorption in different soils, and basically it runs downhill above ground and below ground and into wells. We had a serious problem in West Milford with salt. Now, salt is not as hostile as, as a herbicide, and it doesn't give you cancer, but we've had people lose their wells and, and all over town, in fact, it even happened at our Greenwood Lake, uh, firehouse. And, and everywhere it's stored, it will hit wells, and the water solubility of this chemical is similar. And once it's, reaches a threshold, a point, you know, whatever, there's so many parts per million, it doesn't reduce, it just gets more and more. You can have tons of this stuff, and I imagine tons are sprayed over the many, many miles of the county roads. And it does go into the water, it goes into the soil and into the water system below ground, there's water flowing constantly, and it will eventually, you know, reach the wells. It just goes on for years and years and years. You're looking at a really major health crisis where people can't drink the water because it's contaminated. And I don't want to see it come to that, nobody does. Um, we all kind of moved to this area to have our own wells and clean water and a beautiful atmosphere.
Thank you very much. Your three minutes are up.
Excuse me?
Thank you very much. That was three minutes.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you, thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Good evening. On the last contention from West Milford, my name is Carl Steele, uh, twenty-three Gifford Road in Hewitt. I brought my friend Buddy, and, uh, it's kind of a little depressing, but I want to read to you a quick quote from Rachel Carson from nineteen sixty-two. "On the mornings that had once throbbed with dawn forest, robins, coppers, doves, jays, friends, and scores of other bird voices, there's, there was now no sound." New York Times in an article, "Two point nine billion birds have died over the last," I think, the study was from two thousand seven, two thousand eighteen, from Cornell University. This ties in with pesticides. The neonicotinoids, um, are a pesticide that reduces the body weight of birds, which doesn't, they're not able to fly back to Chile, Argentina, et cetera. And besides the lake issue that my wife Nora brought up, we're kind of frustrated. So we don't need, I think, any more study. Quite often, when you hear the word "study," that's just another word for delaying, stalling, et cetera. We're, uh, asking you, board of freeholders, to please consider our petition not to spray, to work together, so that two point nine billion, billion, uh, no, five billion birds, I have the trouble saying that number. I couldn't believe it. And, uh, it was in the record as well, front page, it's quite apparent, those articles caught my eyes. We need to work together. And, um, the young lady from Sweden is talking about the environment. This ties into the environment, these are warning signs. Rachel Carson wrote about this in nineteen sixty-two. We would like to petition our mayor, former student of mine, uh, to, um, honor our request at this variety, but we need your support, athletic support. And we can work together. We traveled by west the last couple of years, built a pop-up camper out in Texas, New Mexico, the wildflowers are absolutely amazing. It's beautiful, and that's where we live, you know, where we live. So thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak, and, uh, we'll hopefully meet again soon.
Good evening. My name is Richard Stummer. I just live a little bit up town, I'm from Wayne, Jersey. And I've lived in Wayne for fifty-five years, where I'm presently Vice Chairman of the Clean Board and Vice Chairman of the Wayne Environmental Commission. I have, uh, been a professional engineer in New Jersey for more than fifty years, still active. Okay, and I'd just like to add Wayne, okay, to the, you know, with West Milford, and probably add something to the reason, something that's county wine that you're introducing, not just restricted to a particular locality. So likely add Wayne, Wayne could be considered also a warrant with other towns from Passaic County. Wayne has, uh, addition to, uh, county roads, and, and the county roads, okay, you know, some of the drainage that people were talking about drains into Fountain Lakes, uh, Packnack Lake, Pines Lake, and also eventually winds up going into Passaic River. Now, the, uh, I just, when I talk to people in Wayne Township, okay, with regards to Wayne's, Wayne's roads, Wayne's roads do not use herbicides. What they do is they use, have a big plow, and they have a ten-foot long plow that goes over critical intersections to keep the grasses, okay, under control, but that's how we control vegetation in Wayne. So I just, my, Wayne is also concerned, okay, about the, uh, Roundup, use of Roundup, it makes the newspapers every day in terms of people getting, uh, even in Nigeria, okay, affected by the, uh, by Roundup. But it's something that's hit the news, it's made the press, enough is enough already, okay, with regards to using this type of material. So thank you for this consideration.
I'm not sure, uh, if I'm in West Milford, uh, resident, and, uh, I want to, I want to accord the chair this time, we just stand back from that and speak a little further. Uh, I would like to make my, um, something, maybe, and, uh, go on to something else. We're not going to do that. Can I make that motion before we go on?
Uh, well, I, I know that, as a council advisor, I think right now that that's out of order. I know that you can speak in ways...
Freeholders, you're in oral, you're not in oral. I got, hey, well, I know this thing is over.
Yeah.
No, we're just going to talk to the folks.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna have a single unified oral portion today. If you'd like to make that motion after we close the oral portion, I certainly can. I would, at that point, want to hear from our roads department, we're close to the end of the season, uh, whether that's something that needs to be moved tonight or put together as a resolution for next time, uh, but certainly we're at a seasonal point right now that it's time to change things in twenty-five.
I think this needs to be addressed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks, West Milford folks for taking around, but they're still downstairs with their new... Yeah, we, I can, yeah, we, we met in one of Q, uh, we, we do try and take our show on the road, we were hoping to get to Ringwood this year, but didn't, uh, but we do take our show on the road about four times a year. Thank you all very much for coming. interruption to our oral portion, but we can move on to whoever would like to speak.
Thank you, everybody. Ashnankemberg, G six eight, Washington, Outcliffe, in New Jersey. Um, I'm here to talk about something else, but I, I do have to echo the sentiments of the people that are leaving. I've spoken before, um, about concerns about Roundup spraying along the highways, especially, not just some people's well, people that have wells, but the water supplies and the restures. Um, I was glad to hear Mr. Dino would say that they were, were discussing alternatives, because these alternatives really need to be, you're going to be on the train or off the train with this, because the, the Roundup is a disaster. Um, quickly, related to this, not the county, but the state of New Jersey, I recently witnessed spraying on the highway and spraying towards me with a small guardrail in between. And when I called with concern, there's a big hose, if you're, if you're driving with your car window down, and you're going eastbound, and the trucks coming westbound with the lights and all on, and the sign saying that they're spraying, you don't get that service on the other side of the road, and, you know, it's a big, how is a pesticide spraying going by you? I also had a friend recently, within the last year, witnessed in this estate, um, people being sprayed on Broadway in, uh, I guess Elmwood Park, Paris, and Route Four, and people standing waiting for the bus, and the trucks just going by spraying everyone. So stop the spraying, please, find an alternative, find a better way. I'm just here to, also because the Garrett Mountain Phase Two Improvement Project Community Input Meeting, glad to hear about it, glad it's going on, going to be tomorrow at Lambert Castle, um, seven P M. Um, about the second round of renovations you're doing and the concept plans for the scenic overlook area. Um, glad, hoping to see a lot of the public come out and speak up for nature, and, uh, it's really, it's a national treasure that we have up there. Um, I've spoken before, it's a, uh, national, uh, natural, national landmark, and an Olmsted designed park, and a water bond important bird area. And Olmsted, I just quickly, if I have the time to share, um, some of his design principles are to respect the genius of a place, design stay true to the character of their natural surroundings. Um, he was into subtlety, um, respecting the natural beauty, avoiding fashion for fashion's sake, not falling into trends. Um, and that's what we have there. I've been to other counties, and it, it, we have a beautiful park up there, and it's a classic beauty, you have the Lambert Classic, and, um, that whole area just, we're, we're hoping that that will also be preserved into perpetuity, that the, uh, natural Olmsted design and the beauty of that will be, uh, there for future generations. Olmsted, um, in his writing, shows that he should stand for something. He wasn't just making pretty green spaces. Uh, in his writing, he shows that he was democratizing and making it for, for everyone in the public. So that's it. Um, hope people come and attend the, uh, hearing on Phase Two improvements tomorrow at Lambert Castle. Thank you very much.
Jim Weston, President PDA Local Tools Picks. Let me start by saying this is not an adversary. Uh, I think what took place with the changing of the buyer is the timing of it. Uh, earlier today during official contract negotiations, our second meeting officially, uh, I was told by a deputy administrator that as of one one twenty, we'll be changing our supplier. And at the time, we weren't given a copy of the new, of the new plan, anything, just the word of mouth. Again, what is false, just this is what it is. I then have the responsibility to tell my members that, and that set up a fire. I then have the responsibility to tell my members that, and that set up a firestorm. All we're asking for, I guess, in the future is a little bit more transparency. I mean, you're asking us open enrollment in six days, but I don't have a plan in hand. That's, it almost, it gives you the appearance as if you're trying to stuff it down our throat, or there's, you know, there's a hidden agenda, not that there is. And I, and I have to go by your word. A couple of questions I had written down were already answered. And that's great, but until I have the plan in hand, it is what it is. A couple of questions I have is, one, again, when can my members expect a copy of the plan since we have an open enrollment in six days? Secondly, is, is the new plan going to reduce our premiums, and if yes, by how much? And I guess my last, well, Mr. De Nova answered the one question on the record that said, is this plan equal to or greater than the current plan we have? He already said that that is. And the last comment I have is, did you, the Freeholder Board yourselves, review the plan? That's all. I mean, some of the things that were said, I think, ease a lot of people's minds, but again, and I can speak for John, we have a responsibility to our members, and this was kind of, you know, thrown out with no, I mean, we could have been reminded of this two months ago. Just, hey, guys, you know, we're thinking about doing this. That way, ease the panic amongst our members, that's all. Thank you for your time.
The day-to-day Freeholder Board, my name is Danny Elick. I'm currently retired, but I was PBA President of Local 197, and that covered the whole Sheriff's Department at the time. I find it very troubling that Mr. De Nova and Mr. James had to lead this meeting. I spoke to them prior when I came in here. Mr. Freeholder James, his language leaves much to be desired. On that note, it's like the same song over again. I was, did this happen? And Mr. James states to me, or Mr. De Nova states to me, who was old Republic of Freeholder Board, which again, was a blatant lie. He sat as the business administrator when this took place, and Mr. James, Mr. James wasn't, wasn't even a board member at the time. But at the time, we're Freeholders, did what's trying, what you're trying to transpire now is just change the coverage. They, at the time, we had IDA. We went to work, pick up our paychecks, we received new books that they had changed the third-party administrator to Qualcare. That prompted me, as Union President now, to come back to the Freeholder Board, see Mr. De Nova, and Mr. Pasrell was, was actually County Council at the time, Mr. Blodden was Assistant County Council at the time, at which point he provided me with actual plan documents. He provided me with plan documents that occurred, plan we had, which was IDA. He provided me with Horizon Blue Cross Blue Shields proposal, and he provided me, which they had already voted on, which was Qualcare. We hired, we proceeded to hire a consultant, which I'm sure we're Freeholders hired also. Am I correct in saying that? And I'm sure they hired a consultant, which recommended that Freeholder Board at that time also hired a consultant. That consultant recommended Qualcare. Lo and behold, we hired our own consultant, reviewed the plans, and now it's not equal to or better than. I, I think it's a slap in the face to the Union membership of, especially in an open contract negotiation, that this was not brought to them, that you were going to change to a third-party administrator. You know, that's, that's unheard of. You're in the middle of a contract negotiation, I'm sure it didn't open up yesterday, and you're going to spring it on them today that, oh, by the way, we're changing your administrator. Shame on you. Shame on you. It is my opinion that you should table this, provide the unions, and not just the Sheriff's Department unions, all of the county workers, provide them with the proper documentation so they can go hire their own consultant and make sure that they're not going to lose anything that they already have. And Mr. De Nova sits there and says, it is equal to or better than. Well, how you got, you know, he's not giving us anything in black and white. I'm going to believe him, you know, he's, well, I'm a man of my word. All right, Mr. James, same way. It's the same thing. We'll provide it in black and white, and let us decide if it's the same thing. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
John Welsh, PBA 197, President. I'm here on behalf of my membership. I feel as though we have a very good relationship with the current Freeholders, and I'd just like to bring something to your attention. This is nothing personal against each and every one of you. I'm very upset that we're in the middle of a contract, and my members are now in fear, especially the ones that have six children, six spouses, and so on and so forth, that they're going to be afraid to change this medical. I understand where the county is coming from, where they want savings, they want to be more under, I guess transparency was the word that Bruce James used, regarding the medical benefits, and how Horizon right now is not transparent, and Etna will be. This would never, we would never be here. I would actually have calmed the storm, so would Jimmy, if we were just educated a little bit, and maybe this was brought up to us during contract negotiations, and explained to us, because maybe we have to be educated. And I'm hoping what Bruce and the administrators said is true, we want to believe it. But at the same time, I have retirees here, and I have active members here that are afraid, which I don't blame them. My kids are luckily to be healthy, theirs are not. The last thing I wanted to say is, this is just thrown out there to you guys. Right now, our premiums for traditional medical right now is $58,000. Some of my members are losing homes, some of our, some of our, some of our family members of, of the homes that are being lost are causing hardship, which we know law enforcement right now, the suicide rate is at a full-time high. This leads to it. We know that it's out of your control, and we see that you're looking somewhere else to Etna. I'm hoping the premium is lowered. If it's not lowered, I have a proposal that I will email each and every one of you, that Patterson has a state health benefits plan, which is estimated to save the municipality of Patterson $250,000 by 20, I'm sorry, $250 million by 2025. I know about medical. Bobby will speak a little bit more, who's our, our go-to guy. Jason respectfully, he said, our plan is not greater or equal than the state health benefits plan. I'm going to disagree with what we've been educated, me and Jimmy and Bobby. And I'm just going to leave you with that. I'm speaking, yes, sir.
I know you're out of order, but I can ask questions. I apologize. I just, is that your unique position, that you prefer the state health benefits? Because generally, if you had it, it didn't, it wasn't typically popular.
Well, the problem is, our active, our active members right now have a modified traditional, which isn't true traditional. They pay 150% more to Medicare. So our, I know this from seeing doctors, the traditional that they have is actually a better plan than what we have now. Also, the state health benefits plan has gone down, is projected to go down 4% by 2019, which is a savings for, for everyone. My brother, who's a retiree, had a fare loan, he was paying $733 for him and his family. Last year, his premium went down to $433, which is great, because it's a savings for everyone here, and it's a burden off of our families. I just ask, as I, as I leave, to just consider maybe looking into it. I can help you. We can set up a meeting afterwards with Jimmy Weston, but I think, you know, at the end of the day, we're both trying to do what's best for our, for our men and for your taxpayers. And I'll leave you with, if you may, Sergeant Machopio has a couple of questions on behalf of me. That's it.
All right, thank you. A lot of my questions have been answered, just so you know, their licensed insurance agency, selling insurance for 18 years. So everything I was said, just changing administrators for plan thinking, I get all that, I understand it. My issue with changing plans right now is the network size. If you're only James who's not here, just assure me that everybody's doctor will be in network, network. I'm here to tell you they will not. The issue why doctors don't accept Etna as much as Horizon is they, they reimburse a lot less, which is why the plan is cheaper, and the administration process for doctors to get reimbursed is a nightmare. For us to go from one plan to another, anybody with pre-existing conditions that are already in a treatment plan, the administrators from Etna are going to wind up from square one. Not going to pick up where you left off, especially if they have to change a doctor. So that's going to be an issue. Again, I was assured by Mr. James, that would be no issue, but unfortunately, he's not here, I'm going to have to respectfully disagree with him, to know there will be an issue. Another thing is, what about our dental? Is that being changed too? Current treatment plans, okay, are they going to continue? I just said that, the same way, same doctors. Now, I know Mr. James incorrect, is why I was sitting here, I called my hematologist's office, and they didn't have to have Etna. So I have a factor three and factor two blood disorder, I got to find a new doctor. I'm not asking you not to save money. None of us here are asking you to save money. I don't care what you call the plan, if the plan stays the same and our doctors stay the same. You got to save money, we all want to save money. All that any of us here are asking is that you table this long enough so everybody can be educated, and not throw it at us in the middle of a contract negotiation. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, I apologize, anyone else? The only people who are supposed to be here. Freeholders, Dr. Bass, Uffey.
Yes.
Before.
Yes.
Tippy Director Lazzara, Director Barlett.
Yes. Well, my out of order, if I ask for a vote about the Roundup and the spraying, and also I'm motion to table this insurance issue until, we got to do too.
May I suspend the regular order of business?
Ask no motion.
Can I make a suggestion or request? I was going to ask you for a motion to suspend the regular order. Typically, this is the moment in the meeting when the Freeholders have the opportunity to respond and contact back. I would like us all to have that opportunity before we try and do any business.
Fair enough.
So if you, if anything you want to.
Well, I just think the Roundup clears the answer and also something that these men and women should be given the opportunity to take a look at this, in different opinions as well. We are kind of shelling this down, down our throat, on what the urgency is. I know it's a timeframe, but they are in negotiations, contract, it's not fair. On a, on a personal basis, I have somebody, and a lot of people know, I have a person who works for the city of Patterson, he went to the hospital. What was his deductible was $25. This has only happened this week. Now his deductible is $75. Now you have people that break this, and this, children, older people, retired, and these, this is a very, very serious thing we're doing here. This is, this is their lives. This is their health, their families' health. We need to. And West Milford is what? Let's not forget. I'd like to end that tonight.
Anybody else? We're going to complete the responding process, and I'm going to call for a motion.
Those yours.
Anybody else? I would actually like to take a moment to, I'm sorry, Pat, please, I was going to do that, you want to read it?
I just wanted to mention the fact that, first I see it tonight, County Council asked that it be added to the resolution, which makes perfect sense. But I'm looking at the first, there's like 13 factors on here that were, for the recommendation to move to Meridian, and the number one, I don't know, the number one factor is Meridian will match current plan designs on an equal to or better than basis. Now, I know that Mr. De Nova had mentioned this evening that the plan document is the same, everything's the same, we're just hoping about the administrative portion of the plan. If in fact, there are parts of the plan that the rank and file did not agree with, well, there are any negotiations right now, I would suspect now will be the time to discuss changes in the plan document. But as far as the administrative process, it really doesn't matter, the way I view it, the way I understand it, it doesn't matter if or not we go to a different administrator. What's important to them really isn't addressed, or at least that's the way I understand it, isn't addressed in this resolution. This resolution simply states that after review, after discussion between the Urban Insurance Agency and its associates, they come up with a recommendation for three, everything, I'm sorry, I'm changing the word. The second part of this document indicates superior claims management. That's the conclusion they came to, I guess, in discussing with Meridian and their folks, and what we currently have with Horizon. And quite frankly, I don't pretend to know, to get into the weeds of this stuff, I mean, I'm not knowledgeable to that point, but I know I can read it. The, the third item, the county and broker has web access to run online reports and update eligibility. It appears that all the way down to 13, there are checks by the board to go through the administrative, describing the hands, the administrative portion. Now, unless I'm wrong, unless I'm looking at this wrong, that some of the folks brought up here tonight, on the deck, on the, the Republican portion, they had some issues with the coverage. That's not what we're discussing tonight, at least that's not what I understand we're discussing tonight. We're simply discussing the administrative portion of the plan document. If I'm wrong, some of the public.
No, you're absolutely correct. And I was taking notes during folks' remarks, I do want to respond to many of the questions that I manage to write down. But to your point, that's exactly right, we're selecting a new third-party administrator of the plan, which is already in existence. And speaking for myself, and I don't know who else on this day I'm going to be speaking for, you know, we're not just the Freeholder, we're also very potentially consumers of this plan, as are our employees across the county, including the Sheriff's Office. So we've got no interest in making a decision about the management of the plan or about the plan itself, that, you know, disadvantages anyone, that affects, negatively affects anyone's healthcare coverage, healthcare access, et cetera. I want to go through a couple of the questions that we received. Jim, your comment was that you don't have the plan in hand, and when do we get a copy of the plan? You had a copy of the plan for as long as the plan has been in existence, and I don't know if that predates my seven years here or not, but the plan is unchanged. The management of the plan, the selection of the entity that manages that plan is what changes. So to say, the question was, you know, when do we get a copy of the plan, and did the Freeholders review the plan? The plan is going to be in 2020, what it is right now. The question about whether there's a change in premiums, again, the Say County is self-insured, so premiums are based on prior year's claims. So the, the, the control of premiums comes with control of costs. And one of the issues that I know from my conversations with Freeholder James was of concern, is that, just by way of example, out-of-network coverage is capped at 150% of, is it, of in-network? 150% of Medicare. If those claims aren't managed by the TPA to make sure that we're indeed only paying 150% of Medicare, and we're not paying the entire amount of those out-of-network doctors may bill for whatever services they provide, then the TPA isn't managing the costs, and that's going to have a negative effect on premiums. A TPA that better manages those costs. A TPA that better manages those costs should have a positive effect on premiums. Danny, I didn't see any questions from you, I'm sorry you feel slapped in the face, it is always our effort to serve this county by seeing to it that all the people, including all the people in this room that serve this county on our behalf, get the care and the services that they're entitled to. So John Bosch, your question was, were premiums go up or down? I believe I just answered that. I can't speak to the state plan, I'm not adequately knowledgeable about that, but I think I've tried to respond to those. And as Freeholder Four said, we do have the recommendation of Fairview Insurance Agency. They did evaluate along with us, an interview process that involved the administration and the insurance committee, four potential third-party administrators, including Horizon, which this week currently have, and Meritain, which we're going with. I'm not going to read all 13 of the points that you started to read from, Pat, but...
Director, if I might, if I were a union guy and my union rep wanted to see what you were going to vote, I would want to see that, I would put my faith in my union rep. And I understand they're a little cynical, government being government, but I don't know why the urgency to vote on this when these guys haven't had an opportunity to look at it, that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying...
And the only answer I have to that is the answer the administrator gave earlier, which is that relates to having the full time period of open enrollment leading up to the end of this calendar year.
But not add, if we're self-insured, we can set the rules, don't we? Can we have the rules? The playbook is ours.
That's a planned question.
Right? We set the rules, the trust. We can tell you if we're going to do it next year, we're going to do it next week. So...
I don't know how we go about postponing open enrollment, I don't know what happens to our employees if they get a couple of weeks instead of two months at the end of the year, to engage in open enrollment.
Still, there should be more dialogue to be...
Because this relates to contract negotiations and because it relates to legal questions of our relationship with the insurer, I'm going to ask for a motion to go into closed session and talk in the conference room among the freeholders and administrators. Does someone make that motion?
Yeah, really.
Love you, Duffy.
Weird about that. So this is a motion here, this is a motion to suspend the regular order of business and go into closed session, then move by Freeholder Duffy section, by Freeholder...
Where's the transparency stuff?
We'll be back as soon as we can. Can I have a motion to resume, sorry, can I have a motion to come, how do we take this session?
Make that motion. Freeholders, after, Best, Duffy, James, Before, Deputy Director Lozera, Director Bartlett.
As a housekeeping matter, we're going to suspend freeholder reports this cycle. I spoke with Freeholder Duffy, who had questions regarding the Rose and Wood Pilfer. We are going to ask our Rose Director, Ken Simpson, and our Director of Public Health, Dr. Charlene Gungill, to be ready at our next freeholder meeting for a discussion of the options, including costs and health and environmental elements. So that is something that we're giving attention to, but not tonight, given the hour running late and the importance of the other matters before us. I am pulling K-12 out of the consent agenda, and if I get anything wrong about the mission or just let me know. May I have a motion to amend K-12 to add the two letters that we were provided this afternoon as supplements to that?
So move. Freeholders, after, Best, Duffy, Before, Deputy Director Lozera, Director Bartlett.
And I have a motion to adopt K-12.
We'll have discussion, Director? Please. Question I have is, if in fact, we delayed this for a couple of days, what would be impacted in terms of the timing?
My understanding, and I'll let Deputy County Counsel try and answer, my understanding is that the issue, given the time of year, is that the administrative transition of changing TPAs, and again, to recap what I said earlier, the plan doesn't change, but the selection of TPAs requires the issuance of new cards to all our employees, various other administrative processes to switch over by the end of this calendar year from Horizon to Aetna, excuse me, to Meritain, and that that's the reason that here at the end of September, it's a matter that the administrators are going to have to deal with it. This means you're not...
I guess my question is, if in fact, you were to delay action on this, how soon can we have a special meeting, with advertisement, and the rank and file, getting a plan document and all that stuff?
To be clear, when you say a plan document...
The document that they have.
The plan is pre-existent, so the plan document that you're asking for them to get is a plan document that they already have. And I just want to reemphasize that because I think it's important that we understand what we're voting on, say, and what we're not. To answer your specific question about a special meeting and notice, I'm going to defer to Council.
Freeholder, the Open Public Meeting Act says there's got to be at least 48 hours for a special meeting, so I would defer to the clerk in terms of when, because as soon as you could have an ad placed in the newspaper for that, if there was going to be a special meeting in the board.
It's become longer, is it about five days?
So I would, so in light of that comment, Freeholder, I say to you, it's probably going to be a week, one week from now, you could probably have a special meeting, the one that's advertised, properly advertised and notices placed on the bulletin board here.
I don't see anything going to change, other than some interpreted, by the rank and file, that we're not trying to pull a fast one, we seem to be settled, and I think it's totally inappropriate, by the way.
Just let me comment about that. Before Freeholder James left, he asked me to tomorrow morning email him a copy of the plan document, and he intends to give it to the leadership or anybody else, I think, in both 197 and 286 or Friday tonight, so they can review the plan document again, even though they do have it, but we're going to provide it to them again, so there's no misunderstandings about what's in the document.
And it's not going to have any impact on the current coverage that they have, or the coverage that they're going to add starting in 2020, or whatever it's going to be.
As I think has been said before, the plan, the plan is going to be exactly the same, it's only the administration of the sand that's going to change.
Can I say something? You know, the officer, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but you were saying that you've been going back and forth with Horizon over medical bills and coverage and all that. And one of the reasons why we are changing out of Horizon is that very reason, is because they're not coming through with what you need. And when you sat, when you stood there and you told us about all the problems you're having, it's our hope that when we go to this Aetna, that won't happen anymore. There's nothing...
Well, we respect them.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The public portion of this is over. If you'd like to speak privately after the meeting with any of the members of the Freeholder Board, you're free to do so. We can't spend an evening in dialogue about individual claims and individual coverage.
Respectfully, all in said and done, what she put it, we're still on the record, correct?
Please.
No, it's not appropriate. You just... And you know what, a lot of you guys know, I've sat on both sides of the table as a union president in my school district, where I was president, I negotiated contracts and medical, and I understand the uncertainty and the trepidation you have going into a new plan. But believe me, when I tell you that Anthony DeNova is a man of his word, and what he sat here and told you before is the truth, and I will back him 100%, he has gone to great lengths to interview companies and to sit down and talk to them to find out what is actually best for the employees in this county, and some of those employees are sitting up here on this stage. So please know that all that uncertainty and trepidation, you're working with an honest person, and we, I'm sorry, but I can't even sit here and have any doubt that you will have the same coverage that you've always had.
Director, if I could comment, you know, walking in back in this room, there's a young man there, sitting there, headphones on, but he has some entertainment. It broke my heart a little bit, what he said to his daddy, he said, Daddy, can we go home? He was said to be here, and, you know, I dropped my daughter off, TJ has young kids, right before this meeting with a babysitter, and it breaks my heart a little bit that folks here had to take their time, that they came out, that they were, regardless of which side we're sitting on, the fact that you had to take your time out to do this, because, listen, healthcare is critical to all of you, it's critical to that young man, it's critical to his father, it's critical to all your families. I was, you know, I worked for Congress in the past, where I was lucky enough to be his legislative director when we passed the Affordable Care Act in Washington. Let me tell you something, there is no more complicated and difficult issue to discuss with the public than healthcare. And the reason is, is because unfortunately, as public officials, we have to make broad statements. So the broad statement is, everybody will be okay, everybody will be fine, everybody's covered, President Obama said, if you like your doctor, you'll keep it. And generally, in 99, 95, whatever, in the great majority of cases, that is true. But the reason why it's never 100% true with healthcare, regardless of what you do, regardless of what plan you have, regardless of what carrier you have, whether you're talking about whatever coverage, the reason why it's never 100% true is because every individual is different, every family is different, every health situation is different, every doctor is different, every doctor's perspective on insurance is different, so it's incredibly complicated and difficult situation to discuss, and so that's why, when you get into a room like this and you start discussing healthcare, you will never 100% answer the questions or make 100% of the people happy, because you can't 100% have a blanket solution for everybody, because every situation is different. That is a fact, and that is why it's been so difficult to discuss at the national level, it's such a difficult issue to discuss at the county level, it's such a difficult issue to discuss at the local level, because of that fact. And I'm not going to get into larger discussions about healthcare, but all I'll simply say is, I'm sorry to the officers, I'm personally sorry, not for the decision that is made to change consultants, the plan is the same, the benefits are the same, and I'm confident in that, but I'm sorry to the union and its members personally, for me, I don't speak for the rest of Freeholder Board or for our administrator, for, to me, I wish the timing had been done differently, to give you a heads up, so that you could review everything, even if it was unchanged, just so to give you a heads up to do that. That being said, we're left with a difficult decision whether to delay something, which we, I think we all agree on this side, the needs to be made, the changes to be made. If we delay it, it will only create more confusion, and there will be more employees in this county who will be here upset that they don't have time for open enrollment. If cards are issued late, that will create problems. If things aren't right by January 1st, 2020, and people get sick on January 1st, January 2nd, they don't have cards, they end up, that creates more chaos, more problems.
Then why change it? Why change it? If it's the same, why change it?
Because it's a better, it's a...
But he's begging for us.
First of all, sir, 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 first of all, I get no, I get no benefit out of this. What's better for the Freeholder Board is better for the county taxpayers in terms of the bottom line. Okay, again, I don't want to get into a long discussion about this, but I apologize personally that this was not, more notice wasn't given to the union and its members about this change. That being said, I am voting to push this forward here because of the fact that it will create more chaos if we delay open enrollment and cards and electorally issued on time.
Thank you. Anyone else want to be heard? All right. And thank you for that, a good encapsulation of the healthcare system, as I think we could have gotten. What's pending is a motion to adopt K-12 as amended.
Luke, roll call. Freeholders, after...
We did move it.
No, you moved it. Yes.
We're voting to move this.
We are moving to adopt K-12.
Best, Duffy, Before, Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlett.
Yes.
Can I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda K-1 through 11 and K-13 through 35?
Second. Freeholders, after...
Yes.
Best...
Yes.
Duffy...
Yes.
Before...
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera...
Yes.
Director Bartlett...
Yes.
New business, I have a motion on the personnel. Freeholders, after...
Yes.
Best...
Yes.
Duffy...
Yes.
Before...
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera...
Yes.
Director Bartlett...
Yes.
I have a motion on the bills. Second. Freeholders, after...
Yes.
Best...
Yes.
Duffy...
Duffy, yes.
Before...
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera...
Yes.
Director Bartlett...
Yes, before, final motion, coming up this, not this, do you want to stream this next up? Oh, okay, so coming up on October 18th, from 8:30 AM to noon, at the William Patterson University Campus in Green, our Economic Development Unit is hosting Financing Options for Your Company, Meet the Lenders. Thank you, Jennifer Hoffman, for that. Also, Director, I think Saturday, we're cutting the ribbon on the New Garden over at the... Yes, cutting the ribbon this Saturday on the New Garden, the dimension. And Sandy, when is Paws in the Park in Hawthorne?
October 12.
October 12, the Gospel of Mark in Hawthorne. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Freeholders, after, Best...
Yes.
Duffy...
Yes.
Before...
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera...
Yes.
Director Bartlett...
Yes.
Hey, folks, it's John Bartlett, your Passaic County Freeholder and election lawyer. It's early September 2019, and I've been getting some questions about the vote-by-mail law that the legislature came back into special session last month to pass, and Governor Murphy signed, so I wanted to explain it. You'll remember that after the 2016 presidential election, New Jersey adopted a new law where anyone who had voted by mail in the 2016 presidential automatically got a vote-by-mail ballot in 2018. That law was specific to the 2016 presidential ballot, and what they did last month is they went back and added a new provision, so that if you asked for a VBM, a vote-by-mail ballot, in 2017 for the gubernatorial, or in 2018 for the federal midterm election, you'll also go on that list of people who automatically get a vote-by-mail ballot from here on out, unless you opt out of that vote-by-mail ballot. So what that means is if you're a new voter, you requested a VBM for the first time in 2017 or 2018, you will automatically get one in 2019, unless you contact your county clerk and opt out. That's good, it's going to make it easier for you to vote in this year's state midterm election, where your turnout really, really matters. And if you have any questions about what it means to be on the vote-by-mail list, and specifically, the fact that if you do get a vote-by-mail ballot, you will not be able to vote in the machine on election day, check out the other vote-by-mail explainer videos on my YouTube channel. I'll post a link in the comments below, and if you have any questions, reach me via email or via my website at johnbartlett.com. Thank you. Thank you.